Good afternoon, welcome to another episode of Afternoon Study Session. And today the topic is Decision Making Process. And that's a big subject. It would take probably one or two days to go through everything that affects our decision making and how to practice them and so on and so on. But the idea for this became when I'm hand-posted on Poker Strategy Forum. The hand is here, so let's go through that first. And then focus on what do I think about the hand and why are we talking about thinking process today? And what is thinking process? But let's start with the hand. UDG Limps, there's an isolation raise. And then cut-off calls, kind of sucks, bit blind calls and everyone calls, so it's multi-way pot. Decent hand for that, but we flop overpair with the cut-shot. And the original question here was, should we c-bet or not? And in this specific hand, Hero decided, "Good afternoon, Anikma Kambling, welcome." So here Hero decided to bet, but wasn't sure about should we c-bet or not? And I think the answer is actually quite simple. But a lot of things are simple when you know what to do. So first, decision-making process. It's a fine word, another word is thinking process. It's a fine word to just describe what is going through your head when you play the hand. And I have a few examples to show what to do here. One thing I did for this hand, I had a few times of spare time. So I decided to make this kind of graph. Or whatever it is. It was just about c-betting for dummies. Because if the hero on that hand is not sure whether to c-bet, well, it doesn't mean he's dumb. That's just a joke, but it tells that the decision-making process is... It's never complete, but there's a lot to improve. So when Hero is not sure in the hand whether to c-bet the flop or not, then he's not focusing on the right things. And that's the hard thing in thinking process. When you know what to focus on, what information is crucial and beneficial for that spot, you can focus on that information. And if you know how to use the information, those decisions are quite easy. But if you don't know, you have a lot of information there, but you don't know what to focus on, what's the relevant information, what is just a noise, then it's hard to make good decisions. But this is a graph, this was first as a joke. So let's make a graph for c-betting for dummies, like yes or no, and poof, I bet or not. But then when I made the graph, I kind of liked it because it's very simple. And when you look at it, it seems so simple and makes sense. If you hit the flop and you can value bet, you do. If you don't, if you can bluff, you bluff. If you're not sure, you don't do anything. But this is a very simplified thinking process. Do you hit the flop, yes or no? If not sure, then check and try to understand next time if you hit the flop or not. But basic question, do you hit the flop or not? If you do, well, can you value bet? If you can, you bet; if you can't, you don't. Sounds pretty simple. Or if you don't hit the flop, well, if you have fold equity, that's the question then. If you have fold equity, then you bluff; if you don't, then you don't. And this is very simple when you look at it this way. But this actually helps a lot in those flop decisions because this gives you a structured thinking process. And in reality, it's going to be a lot more complicated, or it doesn't have to be, but it can be. Like, do you have fold equity? If you have blockers, you bluff; if you don't, you don't. You have balancing, okay, can you value bet? Yes, do you want to value bet? Do you want to slow play? Do you want to balance your checking range? There's no semi-bluffing involved in this decision tree, but it's a start. And in poker, you cannot just jump to Phil Kalafon's thinking process. Hello, Der Alte, happy lurking. So you cannot just jump to Phil Kalafon's thinking process. You have to take the steps. And this is the first step, make it simple. Now you have a structured thinking process. When the flop comes, you know that, okay, first, I have to see if I hit the flop or not. I would say that especially in small stakes, when you can exploit opponents in heads-up pots, when the flop comes, my first thought that comes to my mind is what kind of flop texture that is? Because then my overall strategy is based on the flop texture. If the flop texture is really good for making moves, then that's my first thought. This is a flop I want to be aggressive. Then I see my hand, if the hand actually gives me reason to play otherwise. But whatever the thinking process is, you need to practice it. And when you play, you reinforce your current thinking process. This is the very important thing. When you play, you basically reinforce the strategies you have. And if you want to improve your strategies, you have to do the work outside the tables. Of course, it's not that black and white, but mostly that. That's why sports athletes train outside the games. Yes, they learn something in the games, you learn when you play poker, but most of the time you just reinforce the habits and strategies you have. Especially thinking process, because you have that timer, we're going to talk about that later, if I remember. You have a time bank, 30 seconds, or on some fast-forwards, you have 15 seconds. You cannot go with your conscious mind alone thinking process. If we made this graph suitable for higher-level thinking process, there would be around 50 different boxes. And you cannot just go through that in your conscious mind on every hand because of the time bank. It has to be in your unconscious mind, it has to be automatic. And the only way to clear things into your unconscious mind is to just repeat, repeat, practice, practice, practice. So that's a thinking process. Another way, think about it, let me find. You all know these kinds of word puzzles. There's a lot of letters and then there's some words you have to find. We've done this. There's two kinds of people. One is kind of people who just stares the letters and goes through random order here and tries to find the hands. Same people, if you have two images and then you have to spot the difference. They just watch the images and try to find the difference by randomly watching around the picture. Then there are people who have a method, system. They might start here and go one row at a time. Or they want to find Venus, so they're going to find a letter V. Where's the first V? Well, there's no Vs in here. Oh, there's, oh, no. Well, fuck, cannot find a V. Oh, there is one. And then they see if there's E around it. So there's E, but let me see, okay, it's not there, there's V-E-N-U-S, okay, Venus is here. Then they try to find Earth, let's find E. No R around it, no R around it, no R around it, and so on. They have a system and method, so they work in steps. They have the process to follow. And I would say that in poker, those people who have a process to follow, whether they know it or not, are probably going to make better outcomes and profits. Because if you have, even in your mind, some kind of process that you follow, when the hand is played, there's certain things that you constantly think, hand after hand after hand. Your results will be better. Instead of those who randomly try to find information and every now and then they find the suitable information. They look at the hearts, they look at the stack sizes, they look at their own toes, whatever it is. And then some of the times they find information that's helpful, but 90% of the information might be just useless. So in here, if we follow the previous decision tree, do we hit the flop or not? Well, now it's the area of not sure. We have overpair and cut-shot, so if we're not sure, we check, okay? Let's assume that Hero thinks that we kind of hit the flop. Then the next question is, can we value bet? And now, there's a lot of variables that affect that question. It's four-way pot, that's one thing. So in multi-way pot, in order to value bet, you need stronger hands than in heads-up pots. So it's not strong enough to value bet, so we check. And so it's like that, the decision becomes pretty easy. Quite easy check. But if you don't know what to think, it's not easy to make the decision. Well, another game that I often like to use as an example is chess. Because chess is 100% strategy. There's no randomized variables that affect the game. Of course, there are things that affect the game that's outside our control. Someone says that, okay, if the opponent has a heart attack, but that's different thing. We don't have randomness in the game. If I want to eat pawn with my bishop, they are not going to fight. There's no randomized dice rolling who wins. When you eat your opponent's chess piece, you know for 100% sure that the opponent's piece is removed from the game. So there's no random variables. So it's total strategy. You don't have to think about probabilities in chess that much. We could just be black and white and say that you don't have to count for probabilities in chess. So it's strategy versus strategy. And in chess, when we start, we are probably those who just try to watch over the board and try to find something to move, like what could I move? Could I eat something from my opponent? And you're like the one who randomly is watching those letters. You try to find a piece of information to use. And then when you hit better, you start to think, when is your opponent's turn? You do that scan while opponent's turn is coming on. So you start to think ahead, at least little, but still you're randomly watching. And when you hit better and better and better, you start to think more and more about strategy. Like, okay, this turn I move my piece here, so on the next turn I can eat his piece if he doesn't move. And then you start to develop a thinking process. And then at really high level in chess, they play, I don't even know how many turns ahead they play, but they play a lot, and you improve. But you cannot just jump to the high level. You cannot buy a chess book and just read it and, okay, now I know that if I open this kind of opening, I know how the match is played. Okay, opponent responded that way, I know what's going to happen. You cannot jump to there, same in poker. And if you watch the videos of good coaches like Phil Kalafon, who explains very well what he's thinking, I think he's one of the best, then it helps you. Like, if Phil has 10 things or steps in his thinking process, and you cannot do it, but as you hear how he's doing, and you pick up the first ones and start to think about those, then it helps you. So when you watch videos and streams, well, streams are more for fun, but when you watch videos and it's about studying, it's not just fun. You're not having popcorn and beer and just watching for fun, which is fine by the way. But if you want to study and you watch videos, try to find videos where the coach or creator of the video explains his thinking process. Because that's what helps you, and that's often the key to get up in states, improve your win rate. Because without thinking process, we are randomly, like here we're scanning the table, the hearts are handed to the board, trying to find that information that helps us. But if we don't, we don't know what to do. But when we know what to look for, that's when we start to improve. That's when you can use the heart. You have 30 numbers in your heart, and if on every hand you're just trying to find the suitable one, you're going to waste your time bank. But if you know what you're looking for, that's when heart becomes so crucial. And as the trend is to make poker faster and faster, we have spin and calls, we have fast-forward poker, time banks are going down, you don't have those five-minute time banks anymore, then the pressure to have a faster and faster thinking process is higher and higher. So I would say that you should focus on it. And often people ask that, can you give a list of what to think? And it's something I've been wondering, yeah, I could. But the problem is that the steps of your thinking process is always based on the skills you have. So I would say that it's better if you make your own. It takes work, but if you're not ready to do the work and thinking, then probably you're not going to do very well in poker in the long run. So what you can do is just make thinking process. Like, on this hand, well, it's four-way. But if we start from the beginning, this is our first decision, forward call or raise. And what affects that? And preflop is pretty much the hand value, that's the first right area. We have to understand how strong this hand is. Is it a multi-way pot hand, is it a heads-up pot hand? What is our opponent, do we have any information? And the information that we need to be looking here is what kind of opponents we have. Do we have passive calling stations? Do we have nits? Do we have aggressive players? Or do we have good regulars? And then, in order to use that information, we need to understand how it affects our basic strategy. So if all of these are unknown, would this be an open or not? Or can I say that, yes, it's a pot size open to isolate the limper? If we have really aggressive players here, then we could actually leave behind or do something else. So there's always two things. One, when you know how to use an information, then you can look for the information. It goes that way. Because if you don't know how to play versus aggressive players, then if you identify that Qadov is a maniac, but you don't know how to use that information, then you cannot use the information, it's nonsense. Hello, Stushy and Mulan Master. So if we know that Qadov is a maniac, but we don't know how it affects our strategy, then we cannot use that information. And that's why the checklist is really hard to make because it's always based on your skills, how can you use the information? Or we see here that Qadov's three-bet imposition is 12% or something. Then what do we do with that information? How does that information affect our raising range here? And if we don't know how, then we cannot use that information, it's useless. And Mulan Master, yeah, the game you like, but you don't understand. Well, that's what we're talking about here, how to understand the game and make those decisions. So you have to work in two ways. First, you have to learn how to use the information. And then you have to learn how to find that information. And very often, Anikma, you have to use the droid and then make a question. Like, droid, does this make sense? And then the droid will give you the absolute truth. So often when people study poker, they just focus on watching videos and just... I don't know what the word is. Well, to put it another way, I think people waste a lot of time when they study poker when they are not studying in the right way. And that also happens in schools, especially in lower classes. When people don't know how to study, then they waste a lot of time and effort for studying in a way that doesn't benefit them as much as it could. Yeah, it's what Mulan Master says, that's pretty right. They watch the video and then they just try to apply the concepts, what other people say, without re-understanding why and what affects that decision. And that's, people try to find shortcuts. And every time when you're passively watching, like you guys are now passively watching, if you don't think, then it's really hard to learn. And the best way to learn is that if you need to process the information somehow in your brain. So just watching, just copying someone's text, that's never as beneficial as actually processing the information in your head and try to do something without it. And that's why I really think that instead of me giving you a thinking process steps or decision-making chart, it's better if you do it for yourself and think, okay, when I play a hand, well, it depends on the situation. But let's say, we have the preflop open and a flop comes. Check, check. What is the first thing I should think about here? Is it the fuck, that's a nasty flop? Or would it be something else? What should I think? And then after that, what should I think? What affects that decision? And so on and so on. Let's see if we have another hand. Oh, this is actually, this is actually pretty suitable. Let's make another one, I cannot copy-paste it directly. So what we're going to do, we create it from scratch, and Hero is on the Qadov. And we have ace, king, five. And then the hand play is that we open, button calls, small blind folds, and bit blind calls. And then the flop comes, check ten, seven. Boom. And what happens is that bit blind checks, and Hero bets eight BBs, button calls, and bit blind folds. And on the turn, it's the queen of spades, giving Hero the nuts with the redraw. And he bet, I put 20, in reality it's 19 and a half BBs, but we bet 20 and opponent folds, alright? So first question, do we open or not? And those are the simple ones. No one has opened, is this in our four-handed Qadov opening range? That's easy, one it is. You could think that, okay, if we had an aggressive player, does that affect our preflop decision at this point? But hard to find a situation where we would do something else than open. And then comes the flop, and now what should we think? Well, if it was a heads-up pot, we could have a different things to think about. It's a three-way, if it was four-way. But here, three-way, often the first question is what kind of board texture it is and have we hit the board? Those are the ones that we really have to focus on. We have to understand what the situation is that we are working on here. So the board is checked in seven, there's a straight possibility, but beyond that, there's also a lot of straws. So it's sort of high action board. Because if it was seven, eight, jack, it wouldn't have that high action frequency. Because then nine would be nuts and hands wouldn't have much equity versus that. But now, eight, nine is the nuts, but someone could have ace, king, queen, someone could have king, queen, nine, flush, draw, two pairs with cut-shots, two pairs with flush draws that are ahead of straight. So it's a high action board, and have we hit it? Well, we have the cut-shot, overpair, and flush draw. So in a way, we have. And there's two, I don't know what the word is. There's two things, or two paths that we can call from here. And that's why I chose the hand, because there's... User FK says that he would prefer checking back the flop with overpair and not flush draw and cut-shot. Hello, Norman, welcome. He would love to check back because he wants to have stronger hands in his flop check-back range. And it makes sense, but should we do it? That's the question. Because now we have one variable that affects our decision-making, what kind of opponents we have. Let's say both of the opponents are passive coin stations. And we identified that. And because we know how to change our strategy versus those players, then by seeing that information, we realize that, okay, they are bad players, they cannot exploit us no matter what we do, so we don't have to balance. Because we understand that we need to have balanced ranges only versus opponents that can exploit if we are unbalanced. So once again, piece of information that, okay, both of these are passive recreationalists. And that information defines our strategy a lot because we have done the work outside the tables earlier, using hours and hours to figure out with examples and scenarios, how to change our strategy versus passive recreationalists. If you haven't done that work, then you have 15 seconds and you're like, okay, these guys are 59 and five, passive recreationalists. How would they play here? What should I do? And boom, you're out of time. So that's why you need to work outside the tables. So we have two scenarios. One, we have good wrecks. We are far, I don't know why we would be in the table with two good wrecks four-handed, but maybe we are trying to challenge ourselves or the small blind is a really good customer. But if we are in a situation that we are facing two good wrecks, because if there's one good wreck and one passive recreational, then the passive recreational sort of limits the options that the good wreck can do. Because the good wreck cannot just fight you because he needs to fight the passive one, so he cannot do that many moves. But if we would play versus good wrecks, then this is kind of hand that we could actually think about. Do we want to bet this one? To have these kind of hands in our betting range? Sort of widening that up beyond nuts and hands that have really high equity versus nuts? Because here we have around, where I've calculated, yeah. Versus nuts, we have 46% equity, so it's not horrible. Or do we want to check back this hand to add these really stronger hands in our checking back range? And that's the strategic question you need to ask yourself and answer, and most likely before you play the hand. So that's really interesting spot because I think you can go either way if you just know why and what you want to do. But if we face average, this was PL2, so I wouldn't think that there would be a lot of CTO masters on PL2 who can exploit your unbalanced ranges on this board. Which is also one thing I want to talk about, about the board structure. How does that, how that does affect our willingness to be balanced or not? So passive players bet for value all day long. Versus nuts, you're flipping. And you get so many calls from draws that you beat. So I would bet all day long because you don't have to be balanced. But if we have very aggressive players, then you could check. Because the thing is that versus nuts, you have 46% equity. And versus sets, you have 39. So you don't want opponent to raise some kind of set here as they just want to gamble. So versus very aggressive, you could check. So it depends on the opponent. So to say, should we c-bet ace, king, five on check ten, seven when we have the... So to say, should we see bed ace, king, five on check ten, seven, when we have the flush draw? The answer is it depends. And mostly it depends on the opponent, assuming we are hundred BB deep. Which we are, here we are, except the big line, it has only forty-five BBs. So he's a shorty too. So that affects. It's a lot of things that affects the decision-making, but you need to know how. Like. Let's give him. He has around forty-one now. Big blind has forty-one BBs. How does that affect your strategy? And if you don't know, then this information is not beneficial. You see that he has forty-one BBs, but you have no idea how to use that information. So don't look at their stack sizes if you don't know how to use it. And, and that's the thing. In poker, there's a lot of information available. There's, especially if you have hot, you have two hundred numbers on your screen. And then everyone has a different stack size, everyone is a different player, they have different nicknames, they are from different countries. And so on and so on. So there's a lot of information. And the crucial part is to spot the right information for you. And it might be different than what's right information for me or someone else. And that's the hard part. And to know what kind of information you need to be looking for, you need to learn how to use the information first. So if you do the work today, later, then you start to focus on how does different stack sizes affect our strategy? And just use this hand and think about, okay, he has forty-one BBs, how does that affect? How is that different than if he had hundred BBs? What, what, what happens when the SPR gets lower? And in general, when SPR gets lower, the hand strength required to stack off goes down. If we were two hundred BBs deep and we have a dry nuts, eight, nine, we are not happy to stack off. But if opponent is, if the SPR is one or two and we have the nuts, we're super happy to stack off. So basically, the lower the SPR is, the more the flop equity matters instead of our possible river equity. So when you know that, then you can find the information that, okay, he's a shorty, I know what affects. We shouldn't be too picky about the hands we stack off, the shorter he is. And one more thing, I talked about the flop texture. Uh, this is not about decision, well, it affects the decision-making. That's the big question. Should we be balanced or not? And I, I think that's one of the biggest questions when we head to 2020. The solvers are, are more and more available. On 2020, there's probably going to be uh, apps and sites more like uh, PLO reasons that give solver strategy available for people who doesn't have shitloads of money to buy a monster solver and make their own calculations. So there's going to be more affordable ways to access solver strategy, post-flop. Pre-flop, it's already there, but for the post-flop. And then the question is, when should be your solver strategy? There's that one area, I call them solver believers. They think solver is the absolute truth that you should always follow. So if you do something else when you play, they say that that's a mistake. The solver says you have to bet one-third. And then there's on the other end of the spectrum are, I don't know what the word would be. They are not recreationalists, but they are, they, they are people who think that it's like Barry Greenstein, math is overrated. Which is one of the stupidest thing. I know what he meant, but still it's so stupid. That believes that you shouldn't follow any solver because poker you play versus person. And both of them are right. You have two ends of the spectrum. Um, Mulan Master is asking, where's the pre-flop solver stuff? Well, PLO Matrix, fifty dollars a month, you get access to very easy to use pre-flop solvers for fifty BB, a hundred BB and two hundred BB stack sizes. Then on Mastermind, there's the pre-flop helper, which is the same thing. Just not as sexy looking app. But yeah, PLO Matrix is probably one of the easiest way to get into pre-flop ranges. It, it's so easy to use. I like it a lot. It's just fifty bucks a month, but. I, I would say that with any software like Poker2, I don't know, it's thirty euros or ninety-eight cents a month, which is quite a lot for especially small-stakes players. But if you get it for one month, you invest fifty euros. And then you use it every day. For one month, you use it as much as you can. You practice the ranges, you make nodes. You find those thresholds. And if you do work your ass off for one month, it's definitely worth fifty, fifty euros or bucks, whatever it is. You don't have to pay it for a year. Yeah, it's six hundred a year. No, you pay it for one month, you practice, you learn the thresholds. Uh, what's their side play? Uh, PLO ten to PLO fifty, depending how the games are available. Because I, I like when my life is comfortable. So I, I don't want, I don't even want to go to PLO hundred, two hundred because uh, you would need a big bankroll and I like to use the money. And I like when the competition is not super hard. I don't have any ambitions to try to be a PLO two hundred rep. It would be nice, but I, I don't have time. Uh, probably my monthly paying hours are around twenty to thirty hours a month. If it's a good month. So with those hours, it wouldn't sense, make sense to have twenty thousand dollars in poker client and playing twenty hours a month because the variance is so high. So I like to grind PLO twenty, have fun. Make some money, buy stuff. So I have a day job. I, I don't have to play poker for money. But that's my decision. And there's no right or wrong in playing poker. But that's the reason why I don't try to achieve really high states with high variance. Uh, yeah, I was about to forget what I was talking about. It was about balancing. Yeah, yeah, I was talking about pay fifty bucks or euros, get it one month. Now Poker2. When you are in, in this state in your learning curve where you could use Poker2 and especially uh, range definitions. How often opponent have something and just get into the range thinking. Then Poker2 can help you a lot in that. It saves time because it's so easy to use. So you pay thirty bucks, get it for a month, one month and use it every day. And then don't use it. Then after half a year or year, you have another spot where you could use it. Get it for one month and use it a lot. And thanks, Chai Diantan for following. We are approaching three hundred mark. So Poker2, PLO Matrix, those, you don't have to live them for life. You can take it for one month and use it a lot. And then it's worth the money. But if you take it for monthly subscription and use it once, once a month, then it's probably not worth your money, I would assume. Um, so about balancing, I think. And Charv is following. Now we have a zombie apocalypse here. Zombie is running all over the screen. Thank you. So, um, about balancing, the important question is when should we be balanced? Because those who say that you should always cover solver strategy, it's nonsense because when we understand why we have balanced ranges, we understand when to use it. And the answer to why is if we are unbalanced, then it's possible to exploit our strategy. But if the opponent is not capable of doing that, then why should we be balanced? Why should we give up win rate if it's not required? And then when you understand that, then you can find the best possible answer on all situations. And you can play balanced poker versus good recs and then exploit the bad ones. So the correct answer is that we should have a basic strategy based on the player pool. And then we deviate from that basic strategy when we have information to do so. And the information might be that, let's say, if I play PLO then, then my basic strategy is way off from being balanced, or even PLO twenty, twenty-five, basic strategy is not balanced. Because the average player is kind of player you don't have to be balanced against. But if I say that, okay, there's a decent rep who can exploit me if I'm very unbalanced, I have to be more balanced versus him, then I deviate from the standard strategy to be more balanced. Some players like to approach that their standard strategy is solver-based strategy that is more balanced and then they deviate from that when they find information do. And I, I would say that your basic strategy should be based on the player pool and average player. Because that's what you've been playing if you have an unknown opponent. And the average rate on PLO is around fifteen BB per hundred. I haven't seen twenty-five per hundred everywhere. In the old iPoker where they had six percent rate, it was twenty BBs. But it's fifteen BB per hundred on average. And it sounds a lot, but then on PLO, there's a lot more really extreme kind of players than in Hold'em, so your win rate is higher. So after the rate, you, you still get that ten BB per hundred. So the rate is high, but the level of opponent is not as high as in Hold'em. And hello, Primrose. Oh, now that Primrose is here, I actually thought about Primrose today just before the uh, study session. Because where's the awesome graph? This one. Because I, I always like to compare poker to other sports or other areas of competition where you require skill. And I know that Primrose plays tennis, so we're going to use tennis as an example. When you start to learn about how to serve in tennis, then you just, you, you just don't do the whole serving. Like you watch how high-level people do it and then some kind of coach tells you that to serve, you have to do this, 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 this and this, and then this, and then you just go and do it. No. You put it in small sections. First, you start to practice how to put your feet, what's your starting position, how to throw the damn ball in the air, where your practice is when you start to serve and so on. You learn it bit by bit by bit. And then you start to combine those, then in, then in the end, you can do the whole serving. And you can do the same here with thinking process. This is the simple one. Um, basically you go from simple one to more complicated one, but you have to do in steps. That's what I told you about studying, that if you just watch the video and take a high-level concept and try to put it in your game, it doesn't work, but do it one, one bit in a time. Like this is very simplified thinking process. But if you don't have a thinking process on the flops, then start with this one. This, this was a joke in the beginning, but then after I actually thought that, okay, it, it's a good example how you can make a really simple one and kind of starting point. And then when you get better, you start to add different options here. And then from the outside comes more information. And then it gets complicated and complicated. But start with the simple one and work forward. Twenty-one BB per hundred, yeah. The thing is that the more you win, the more you pay rate. So if you're a winning player, you pay more rate. And it depends on the side. Some sides have five percent rate and small states. And then others have three and a half or something, so. Yeah. The rate is high. That's why you would like to have some kind of rate back. And that's why PokerStars kind of sucks because you don't have a rate back there. At least a decent one, unless they have promotions, that's different, but as a standard, they give you four percent. Which sucks because on other sides, like if you pay fifteen BB per hundred and you get a thirty percent rate back, you get five BB per hundred from just a rate back. And party poker, I, I don't know why party poker rate back sucks. They give you thirty to forty percent if you just play a little twenty percent for starters. And you don't have to pay that much to get thirty percent. And, and you play it weekly. So all of those who bust their bankroll, they have to new one every Monday. So I think party poker actually has, I, I don't, I don't know on the bigger sides where you can most. Of course, on running ones, you can up to hundred percent now. That's awesome. But I don't know. Yeah, on party, you have to pay twenty-five, so if you pay really small states, then it sucks. But I think you get twenty-five dollar rate in a month shouldn't be that hard even on PLO2. I mean, if you pay thousand hands, you pay two dollars rate. Well, actually three dollars if it's fifteen BB. So you have to pay around eight thousand hands a month. That, that shouldn't be too hard if you play on constant basis. But then the question is, you don't have hand histories on, on party poker at the moment, so if you are trying to learn the game and improve, then you kind of would like to have the hand histories in your tracker to use them for studying. So that's why playing on PokerStars would be a better option in the long run. In the short run, no rate back, but you, you improve more faster if you have the hands to tracker. Yeah, and it depends. If you play every now and then one or two tables, then it's hard. But then probably the amount you're rating is not that high. It doesn't matter where, how much the rate value is if we are talking about one or two dollars a month. Yeah, on party poker, if you play PLO twenty-five, then you can quite quickly get a pretty good rate back. So it's kind of, if you're break even, then you're going to get around six or seven BB per hundred from just a rate back. So you can make a decent profit by just trying to be break even in the games. And yeah, the rate is definitely an issue. And I, I would say that the more you play, the more you should consider about the rate and the rate back. Which is the standard rate back, all the promotions. And it's not just about the rate back, it's about how much you pay the rate. So you, you have to calculate your actual rate paid after all the promotions. How much you pay after everything is calculated. Because I know that some years ago, when Affiniate stuff was going on really hot, there's a lot of people that gave sixty percent rate back to iPoker, seventy-five percent rate back. And then there were, there were sites that said that we have a fifty percent rate back for everyone. They just didn't mention that their actual rate is a lot higher than other ones. So the net rate you actually paid was higher and people just went for the high rate back deals without understanding how much they pay rate. Like if you pray, let's say we have two sides. One has two and a half percent rate, but no rate back. And then the other one has six percent rate with fifty percent rate back. The first one is better because the net rate is smaller. Because on the other side, you pay six percent and a half back, your net rate is going to be three percent and the first one has two and a half. So you should calculate, but if, if you play thousand hands a month, it doesn't matter. The amounts are so small that you shouldn't worry about them. But if you pay a hundred thousand hands a month, then small increasing or improvement in, in rate back can be worth hundreds of dollars. So then definitely pay attention on, on, ah, sorry, on the rate and stuff. Alright? All right. Uh, I don't remember that I have anything else about thinking process. There was a lot of discussion about rating stuff. So then it's, it's time to put that into use and let's do a live session. Because I'm going to stream today a lot. I'm so many hours behind my monthly target. So let's open up a session, probably run it once, doesn't have games open. So let's do Party Poker and then run it once if we have. And let's try to focus on the thinking process. Of course, the timer is a bit small or the time bank. So let's see how much we have time. But even then on the replayer and try to figure out how to play. So all I can say is thanks for the study session. I'm going to end the stream and start a new one. So we will continue, uh, in around five minutes or so. So we start with the delay. So don't go anywhere, grab a snack and then let's do a live session. Thanks for this and I will see you in five minutes. Bye-bye.